Justice for all.
All right, please sign in.
We have four members present, Your Honor.
All right, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
The approval agenda has distributed.
All right, please vote.
For yes.
All right, item two is Citizens Forum, which is a time for anyone in the audience would like to address the City Council on any item that's not part of new public hearings, item six, or new business, item seven, or involves any current litigation. Melman?
Do identify myself.
Yes, please, and your address.
So I am Milton Cole de Val. I live at 2001 South 40th Court here in West Des Moines. So I'm here for several things. First of all, I'm here to thank each of you on the City Council and, and city employees for your tireless work during these tiring times of COVID, public awakening and awareness that all citizens are, are of worth, value, and significance. I'm sure that none of you signed up for what you've been through, but I offer you accolades and, and surefire public appreciation from not only myself, but my wife, for the, for the efforts, the endeavor, and the outstanding leadership that you, you, you took us through these last months. So thank you very much. Secondly, Russ, as an aside, if you had sent your son to my front door the first year you ran, it wouldn't have taken you five minutes to convince me to vote for you.
You're, you're too kind, Milton. He passed on that word, and I got a good shock.
But we don't need to put him on the Iowa Tourism Council, because he told me he's getting the heck out of here, either moving to Arizona or Miami where it's warmer.
You know, we hope our kids go experience life, but then they ultimately come back here.
But he was in that blue delight.
Well, thanks, Milton.
So I'm here because of today's front page story in the Register. I hope you've seen it, but if not, I'd like to enumerate a couple points. The, there was an article about a Mr. Connolly who provides public assistance in terms of offering security at a variety of buildings. But in this article, I was unbelievably alarmed at some of the comments he made. He said that members of the Black Liberation Movement are, quote, little, and then these are his words, not mine, but it's what we have to live with. He said they're little sissy bitches. On four occasions during the summer of 2020, he sent emails criticizing Black Lives Matter. I found the reading of his emails incendiary. Nobody charged last summer during the Black Lives Matter conversations were charged as terrorists, although he said they all were. He said he has no recollection of these emails that he sent out, which I think is a bit somewhere between interesting and alarming. He said, "If somebody doesn't want to do business with me because of my opinion, then don't." He said, "I'm just a candid individual. If I did send the emails, it would be my opinion and certainly not that of the city." He said, "I, I, I contend it is not that easy to differentiate emails, social media comments, deriding media and Black Lives Matter information." These are his words, not mine. He sent these emails June 4th, June 6th, June 17th, June 22nd in 2020. I, I bring this up tonight because I learned that he is employed by our city. He has a contract that was approved and, and serves. I had a, you know, I could say I had hundreds of calls. That would be an exaggeration, but I talked, I talked to seven different people today who initiated calls to me. I didn't initiate them to them, and they were greatly alarmed in hearing that he is engaged by our city because they consider what he said very derisionary, not helpful, especially in the times that we have just lived through and that the times that we are living in now. So I appreciate your time, but I thought it was important enough for me to come and, and, and bring this up tonight. I'd rather, I'd rather bring, have this conversation with you, fine city leaders, than take it to the streets and say, "Why are they doing this? Why, why did the city of West Des Moines do this?" Why, you know, and then cite your names, because I don't know how the vote went, and I don't know what you knew of him when you hired him, but I just, as, as a citizen that, that, that has lived here for some 16 years, is much longer than anywhere else in my adult life, have grown to really love and appreciate the, the quality of life here, the growth that's taken place under your leadership and your direction. I, I thought it was important for me to make my sentiments known.
Thank you, Milton.
Tom, I'm assuming we're looking into the whole situation then. Go ahead, your name.
Yes, yeah, we have a contract to the end of the year. Of course, we had no prior knowledge of where he was and his personal beliefs, but yeah, we will follow up.
I, I would like to make a commentary here. First of all, I want to thank Milton Cole, Mr. Milton Cole, for being here tonight, but I want to thank him for his membership on the Human Rights Commission. He's an, an avid member with lots of comments, and if you got to know his history, you'll appreciate from where he has come from and the struggle that he has experienced and has seen and has lived his life to try to make change. So I want to thank you also for serving on the West Des Moines School District Board for eight to 12 years. I was in a meeting this morning at 7:30 a.m. Actually, Tom was in the meeting, and I got a text from a concerned citizen about what was on the, on the front of the Register. And honestly, folks, this is why we're elected, is for people to express their concerns about what they have heard and how engaged are we in the matter. So I am a proponent of free speech, but I am also a proponent that if we have someone that is using the language that is espoused in this article, then we need to really, really examine, is it the place for us to be doing business? Because it is the leadership at the top that sets the tone for its employees. So understand from me personally, Tom and I had a discussion about it, and I want to applaud Tom for saying that he wants to be in a meeting with this, this, this man, and I do too. And he said, "I'll set up the meeting, but I want to be there because I want to ask questions." And I want to say to the listening public, I intend to ask questions, and if we in West Des Moines are doing business with a CEO that has that kind of divisive language, we've got to examine that. And I for one intend to do that.
Sounds like, Tom, that's, that's the investigation that's occurring now. Okay.
Yeah, I, I would just add to that. I don't, I, I received a voicemail before coming here from an angry citizen as well about Mr. Connolly's statements. I have not personally seen them. First I've heard of them is, is you reading them up here, and that's troubling that he made those comments to me, and I think that we need to look into it further and, and examine it as, as we're doing. I'd love to be there for that meeting as well and ask him questions as to why he's made those comments. I think they're extremely inappropriate and, and gross generalizations and, you know, I, I don't think the city should be doing business with somebody that, you know, has, has points of view that, that, as such, that are derogatory and demeaning to people. We need to treat people here with dignity and respect, and we want to do business with those that treat others with dignity and respect. So it's very troubling to hear those comments. I have not read that article. I'm going to be reading that when I leave here tonight, but that was very troubling to me and constituents very upset that we're doing business with this individual as a result of what they read, and we definitely need to look into that further. So.
Yeah, and I think in fairness to us in the process, we weren't aware of anything like that when they were hired. So at first, I think we've been exposed to any of it. So it, it sounds like there's a full-fledged investigation analysis on it, and we'll make the right decision. We're working too hard to be inclusive and fair to have business partners or vendors create hostile environment. So, all right, anyone?
Please, I, I hope you did not hear me as being abusive in the.
No, not at all.
Because the people that called me today, they, they had no idea of this man's background and.
Yeah, I, I don't think any of us took that, but we need to talk to him and ask him about these comments, for sure.
Right, for sharing, Milton, and bringing to our attention. Appreciate that. Anyone else for Citizens Forum? Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Victor Duchuk, and I'm at 1034 South Kingswood Court here in West Des Moines. And first of all, thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to talk about a potential, a proposed change to our building and our plumbing code for the city of West Des Moines in, in, with encountering this problem. I just want to say a thank you to Mr. Haddan, and he's not here, but Councilman McKinney. They kind of steered me to find the right people within West Des Moines to help try to understand this problem a little bit better. So bear with me. I'm going to give a little bit of background as the, how I get to my point. But in December of 2020, we purchased a home on Kingswood Court, right next to Sugar Creek, and we decided in May of 2021, when we moved in, that we were going to install a water softener into our home. And when we did that, it was at that time that we discovered that the water pressure in our house was dangerously high, the water pressure coming into the home. It was measured to be like 150 PSI, and it's our understanding through research that the appropriate is between 60 and 80, so nearly double what it should be. And so what we did is we hired a private contractor to remediate the problem. And what we did after that point is we found out the West Des Moines Water Works was aware of this problem in our area in the past. So I reached out to, I started with the board here, the council, and they directed me to the Water Works Group, looking for reimbursement for the cost to have this remediated. And what I discovered from information that was provided to me by the West Des Moines Water Works was that they confirmed they were indeed aware of this problem several years ago. And what they did is they informed the builders and the developers that this was a concern in the area. And the folks over at the Water Works provided me copies of meeting minutes in which they discussed the problem, and they also provided recordings of conversations that they had where they actually acknowledged, or actually informed the developers, including the, the home and, and builders, including the builder of our home was Orton Homes. So what I did is I took that information, sent it over to the CFO at Orton and say, "Hey, you know, this was a problem. You guys knew about this problem. Would you please reimburse us for the cost of fixing it?" And they said, "No, it's not in code, so we're not going to do anything." So we're kind of stuck in the middle here with the city knowing the problem, but informing the builders and developers, saying, "You guys need to do something about this." And then the developer saying, "Thanks for the information, but unless you put it in code, we're not going to do anything about it." So I'm here tonight to ask the City Council to consider making an adjustment to the code that requires any new construction that has a PSI of over 80 that the builders or the developers require, that you would require to put in the appropriate remediation, which is a pressure reduction valve and an expansion tank. And just for reference, I reached out to the city of Grimes, because I heard that they had a similar problem in one of their developments. And I spoke with Steve Tibbles. He's the Deputy Building Officer for the city of Grimes. And what he informed me is that they kind of mirror their plumbing code to the Uniform Plumbing, Plumbing Code, and the Uniform Plumbing Code says basically if it's over 80 PSI, it needs to be addressed. And there's also an international plumbing code that has the same type of guidelines if it's over 80 PSI. So I think it'd be wise for the city to undertake consideration of changing the code. I mean, not only is it the right thing to do, but it also could prevent any liability issues for the city and also injury to, to people, because I've heard stories of exploding toilets, exploding, exploding sinks, that type of stuff. Yeah, I was surprised too. So I, I'd like the city to consider making some changes to the code, and I'd also like the city to consider, and I'm not sure, you know, it's up to you, obviously, how to do this, but I think that homeowners such as myself should be entitled to reimbursement from someone, given this was a known problem. And we didn't know about it. It wasn't disclosed to us when we purchased the house. And we have a couple neighborhood Facebook groups. I put this information out there on both of those neighborhood groups, and I, I heard from several neighbors that were not aware of this problem, or, you know, they were aware, but nobody would do anything about it. And so I think it's an important issue. It's, it's not over controversial, but I think it's important from a safety and a liability perspective.
Lynn, don't we already recognize the Uniform Plumbing Code and International Plumbing Code?
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah.
Adopted by reference. I mean.
So then why, maybe you need to come forward and.
Unless there needs to be.
Well, because I, I was asking, I asked, I was trying to find the code. I think Matt was trying to help me find the proper code, and we were having, we got connected with somebody, and I, forgive me, I can't remember the names, but there was, this issue wasn't addressed in our code.
Well, maybe it's not addressed in that code, and you have to amend it to include that. I don't know. That'd be my guess.
Lynn Twain, Director of Development Services. I can certainly have Rod Ben Dendron to see what we have adopted for code and whether or not there should be an extra provision put in there, so we can look into it.
And it's, if it's already currently covered like Grimes is because of that, we should, we should let Victor know so that he can get back to Orton and say that it is, it is in the code.
It may be how it's written in the code. As you know, sometimes things are suggestions and not requirements. That's partly what we need to look into and.
Appreciate you bringing this to our.
Yes, thank you.
Can you make sure you get Victor's information so we can get back with him once we've done our research? Yeah.
I can, I can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
This is good. Good stuff.
Hi, my name is Al Wumble, and I live at 818 Ashmore Circle. I just want to start off by saying that I have been a proud resident, worker, and worshipper here in the city of West Des Moines for several years. And I know that this point has already been brought up by the good gentleman over here, Tom, I believe his name was, but I just want to, Tom?
Milton.
Milton.
That's okay.
Well, I used to play football and have a lot of head injuries, so please give me a break. Milton who wrote Paradise Lost. Yes, actually, I have that book on my shelf somewhere, but I just want to reiterate, so it's heard loud and clear from the citizens of West Des Moines. You know, I, last year, was so very proud of West Des Moines, when the protests happened and how our city reacted when young protesters took to the streets here. It gave me a great sense of joy. I was even more proud when I was approached by Councilwoman Renee Hardman to work on the mayor's pledged task force and got a chance to work with my now friend, Chief Scott, whose leadership capability is only exceeded by his stunning good looks and the ability to work further on issues of equity here in our great city. Like I said, I am a proud West Des Moines resident, and I would hate to see our city spend money on someone who's made such ugly, derisive, and frankly disgusting comments. As I shared this article with my friends from around the state of Iowa, everywhere from Waterloo, Cedar Rapids, Davenport, Sioux City, Council Bluffs, all over, all were in shock and disgusted. And I would hate to see this city that I have seen, "We still have work to do. There's a lot yet that still needs to be done," but we've made great strides, and I'm very proud of that. I would like to see that continue, and I would like to see the city of West Des Moines say to an individual like Tom Connolly, "You know what? We have other vendors we can go to. There are a lot of other people who are waiting for our business." The city of West Des Moines will not tolerate, condone, support, or do business with people who say such derisive and ugly comments that make some of our citizens feel like they are not welcome within this city that I am very proud to call my home. So I implore you, please, when you take a look at this issue, understand there are citizens out there who love this city and want to still feel comfortable here, and make sure that their children also feel comfortable within these city streets and still want to call this place home. So I implore you, please, look at Mr. Connolly and say, "No, thanks. We've got lots of other people who would love to do business with us." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al. I really appreciate you also being here and sharing why you love this city. This what makes us all feel proud is that you live in a city that you're proud of, but it, it could take one act like this that can turn things around. So I want to thank you for your work on the mayor's task force. I really appreciate your rise into the occasion and being on that and did a great job and have formed a really good bond with the chief. That's, that's what helps relationships in this city. So I cannot wait to delve into this, and you have our word that we are going to have a conversation with Mr. Connolly, and we're going to evaluate the business that we do with him and whether or not we're going to continue to do business. You have my word.
All right, anyone else for Citizens Forum? We'll move on to Mayor, City Council, City Manager Reports. Kevin?
Nothing this time, Your Honor.
Russ?
Yeah, F and A met and went over several items. I'm not going to go through them in great detail because most of them are on the agenda tonight, but we, we talked about the general fund cash reserve, cash balance, cash reserve balance policy. We've typically tried to keep a cash reserve of 25% or greater. We need that for our bond rating. Bond rating agencies would like to see a reserve policy of 30% or greater. And so on the agenda tonight, we're going to be moving that up to 30% or greater for our, our bond policy, our reserve policy, and to make sure that we maintain our AAA bond rating. We updated the list of approved city depositories. We do that for banks that are in the city of West Des Moines that qualify. We had a few, I believe, to update and add. And we updated the list of city petty cash funds for the RecPlex when it comes online and based on Shane's experience and research and recommendations, have a policy of $8,000 of petty cash for the, for the RecPlex. We also talked about the Community Development Block Grant Rental Rehabilitation Program. I hope that you're excited about this, my friend.
As are my constituents.
I, I think it will be, we, we reviewed the guidelines for that, which are in your packet. I think that Christine did a great job working through that to make sure that we have good guidelines that are fair and reasonable. And I, I think we have that. There is one amendment that I'm going to be offering to that, and as we talked about that in F and A, Councilman Hudson and I, Renee Johanning Myers, you know, has been a little bit critical of some of our programs related to affordable housing in that we're not getting the funds directly to the people that need them most because we're at 80% of the area median income or less. Those are HUD guidelines, and we were just adhering to the HUD guidelines. But we are now, for this program, going to start with, if the amendment passes, 60%. And how we arrived at that is we discussed the different income guidelines and who we'd be helping at that level, and what Greg and I based that on was essentially 60% of the area median income would help a, a starting teacher, and we thought that was a good place to start with this program. So I'm going to be offering amendment to take that down to 60% or lower of the area median income. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Hey, Greg.
Sure. We just had a community compliance subcommittee meeting right before, and just wanted to thank all of the fine city staff who work hard to make sure that our city is, is clean, and if there are any issues, that they can address those. So just wanted to give a special thanks to those fine folks who are on that committee with Kevin and I. And finally, I think I wanted to just do a quick shout out because for Sally and Ryan and Shane, I believe we have a, a big, a big event coming up, our first goalie camp in just, how many days away?
Four.
Four days away. The ice is ready? And we're invited for a post-council, like, slide around, all of us? Is that, is that possible? All right, fantastic.
I thought Shane was going to get in goal, and we were going to hit slap shots at him.
Either way, it's just.
No work comp claims, by the way.
It's just incredibly exciting that.
Waivers.
That we will have people in the facility for the very first time in four short days. It's been a, it's been a huge process, but a lot to be proud of, and we still have more to do, but just really excited. So congratulations to the entire Parks and Rec team for, and the entire city, because this is, this is awesome. So.
Renee?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to just say that Councilman Trevilian and myself participated in the first task force for the Historical Valley Junction Steering Committee, and it was a robust committee meeting of folks that I think are so incredibly engaged in how we move forward. So I know that it's been weeks and months that, you know, we were trying to get all this formed and normed, which has got to start somewhere. And so I want to thank Clyde and his team and others for preparing documents and the agenda for our first meeting, which is probably going to be many, many meetings to come regarding how we move forward with honoring the legacy of the historic, historical Valley Junction area. So excited about that first meeting that we had. I'm also excited about a process that Councilman Hudson and I are going to be participating in. We talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion and how that shows up in the city of West Des Moines, where we, we do know that the city of West Des Moines will be having a Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Officer, and they have narrowed it down to about four candidates, four to five candidates. And Greg, I mean, Councilman Hudson and I will be participating along with other folks in that process, and I couldn't be more happier to lend a lens to that particular exercise. I do want to say that we had a good Human Rights Commission meeting, and that commission is always looking for ways in which we can enhance our profile, making sure that this city is a welcome city for all. And they're just so engaged as well and always looking for ways to truly lift up the great work that's being done. A library board trustee meeting tomorrow, and I do want to call your attention to something that'll be on the agenda a little bit later. And we did have a planning and development meeting. We talked about our friends, for the furry friends, and the need to elevate the height requirements for animal shelters because we have big pets that jump, huge pets, and we just got to be careful of that. There are about four or so dogs that jump, and we, we've got to create something a little bit higher for animal shelters. So we're looking for support from that to help our friends at Furry Friends.
Okay. Tom?
Therefore, Your Honor.
I, I'll make mention, Chief Scott emailed us today and said that they've been notified from Kalia that they've been reaccredited. I think it's the ninth accreditation, and so when we, when you get the information, and we'd love to do a formal acceptance and appreciation of that. We know how much time and effort goes into that, the commitment for it. Last time I did a little research, I think maybe a little, about 20% of the departments in the United States have nationally accredited, so I know one of the first things I did when I was mayor, we went to Cincinnati where we received the accreditation, and it, it became very clear to me that it's not easy to get and that people really do respect that. I know our fire department goes through accreditation, our EMS, and I'm always proud to say on the state of the city that there's about 12 cities in the United States where all their departments nationally accredited were one of those. So when you call 911, you're going to get the finest public safety anywhere in the country. So, Chief, great to get your email, but we really do want you and your team to know that we understand how time consuming that is and the resources that go into it, but I think it makes a huge difference. So thank you for that leadership as well.
Mr. Mayor, that. Just to let you know, the fire department also received word today that they were certified in their process, so that's.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, item four is the consent agenda. We have another letter from MediaCom on the dyes tonight, so Ryan will make sure that MediaCom's letter is part of 4L2 and 4L3. Normally, we would pull those, so Matt could abstain, but he's not here tonight. So are there any consent agenda items that anyone on the council wants to pull?
C, 4C12.
And 4D.
Okay, you want to move the rest?
I'd move the remainder.
Second. Second.
Or yes?
Okay, 4C12. Kevin is a Alan Castro doing businesses vibing in Friends Entertainment. 400 Block of Railroad Place, five day class BW permit and outdoor service July 24th of 2021.
Well, it ties in with 4D. But my, my reason for pulling this is I think that this venue would be better fitted at the amphitheater out here rather than closing down a city street for something that it's my understanding from an email that I got today that they don't even have everything lined up to make this thing happen in five days. From insurance to where they're going to get their alcohol. It was told to me that they were going to buy it in Costco and then sell it down there, which that's bootlegging. And last night I knew that's illegal. I just think that also he's, according to the permit, it says that he has signatures from 401, 409, and 411 Railroad Place. And in looking at the assessor's website, 401 and 411 is the same property, national speech and debate. So that means he's contacted two businesses down there. And I don't think that's a good representation of the businesses that are down there. They say it's going to start at 4 o'clock, but I'm quite certain it's probably going to be set up. It's going to be more like about noon. So that means the road's going to be closed the entire day. And these businesses, I don't think should have to suffer that for something that may very well not even materialize. So I just think it's better suited someplace else.
Yeah, so I, you know.
Put your name and your address, please.
My name's Alan Castro, and I live 6108 Tonka Avenue. So, you know, this is my first outdoor event. Like, I specialize in indoor concerts and stuff. And, you know, my dream is to have my own music festival. And I feel like this would be a really good experience for me, honestly. But yeah, with the insurance, I did make a mistake, but I got it handled today. I was asking for coverage for a day, which no company does that here in in West Des Moines, which I do have proof that I have the Dram Shop insurance. And then I also have the liability insurance as well. And we won't, for those businesses, there's a tenant that used to have, you know, the barber shop right next to the vape shop. So, you know, he, the lady asked me that worked at the vape shop. He worked, you know, lives upstairs, you know, he can, he can sign the thing. And that's where I got that signature because it is the same property, but there used to be another business there. But, but yeah, I was able to get the insurance for that. And like I'm saying, I would even, it's about the music for me. So like, I don't even have to sell alcohol at that venue. It's just really getting, using that beautiful space, you know, to create a really cool event for the city of West Des Moines. And then as a young entrepreneur, as myself, I want to get the experience, you know, and learn. And, you know, I have friends that, you know, that own the 515 A Lot Music Festival. And, you know, that's a dream of mine to do. But, you know, and also make money. And, you know, they say if you, if you, you know, it doesn't feel like you're working, you know, it's your dream job. And this is basically what it is for me. And, but yeah, I've seen the, you know, I I think this would be a really cool thing for that venue. I, it won't be hu, it's not a huge concert, you know, it's not.
You're talking 150 people, though. That's pretty good size. And I also wonder how you're going to contain the music when.
Right.
There's no roof down there.
Right, so the sound system I'm using, it can be leveled to, you know, a certain dB level. So it doesn't disrupt the the people around it. And then also, I'm also going to have a second stage, like a small mini stage with headphones. It's called a silent disco. So we're not going to be blasting music. But like I see events there on Thursdays, you know, it's not, it's not going to be anything more different than the farmer's market that's there, just probably a different kind of music. But, but yeah, if you guys need proof of that insurance, like I would, we'll have it first thing tomorrow morning. You know, I did make a mistake because this is, this is my first time doing an event like this outdoor. I'm usually at Baller, you know, Woolies, like I do events and concerts there, bring big name artists in and stuff. And I kind of, you know, want to make my dream a reality and do outside events because there hasn't been any. And the next outdoor event we have is, you know, a thing called Cosmic Kingdom, which I'm pretty sure you guys haven't heard of it. But, but yeah, that's the.
I'm hip, man. I may have.
I do have a question.
I, I pulled, I pulled mine, okay, which is related to this for a very different reason.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't, I don't know you from Adam. This is the second time that you've been here with a request. I am very impressed at how you handle yourself. I'm very impressed that the gentleman that I see, you are. I do see that ambition and that dream in you. I am very sorry that we were not allowed to have you do your concert last time you came here. I hope you understood that. It was due to the pandemic, and I thought you handled that very, very well.
Totally understood.
And I was just sorry that we weren't able to have you do that, but it was in the name of public safety. So I I'm just very impressed with you as a young man and going after your dream. As far as I'm concerned, as long as you've dotted all your i's, you've crossed all your t's, you've meet all the city requirements that we outline. I haven't heard from any business owners down in Valley Junction that don't want this going on. And I'm happy to support this and see you go for your dream. I just, please, please make sure you dot every i, you cross every t, make sure you've got something there for crowd control and that you got the music volume under control. But I'm really happy to to see you back here going for this again. Happy to support it.
And I have a question as well. How, when, when The Taste of the Junction goes on, is that in the same area? The Taste of the Junction, and they have music out there and they're out that area. So The Taste of a Junction goes on. And then Cinco de Mayo, aren't they having a big event in September where it may not be in that area, but they, we've closed down that, almost that whole street down there? And you talk about music, they have a huge stage. So I just want to be, I want to be sensitive to other venues like Cinco de Mayo, which is probably going to be five times as bigger than your event. And I know The Taste of the Junction is being scheduled and whatnot. So I want to be real careful that other folks that are trying to start off and start small and and do something that.
They don't get shut out.
They, they, you know, that they're, they're shut down. We're trying to bring diversity to this city. We're trying to bring different events. We're trying to allow folks from different, all kind of walks of life, young, middle aged and old, to bring variety to this city. And so I, you know, with Cinco de Mayo coming up, and they're going to have five times more louder stage, bigger stage. The Taste of the Junction is going to be happening down there. I just want to, I just want to ensure there is fairness for others to be doing the same thing that we allow others to do.
Thank you.
Ryan, let me ask you, it's on here. So does, does this mean that you have everything that you need?
The, the insurance requirements would be the last thing. So this approval would be subject to receiving that.
Okay.
It sounds like that's.
First thing tomorrow, and I can email you that policy.
Okay. The difference is, though, Renee, in the, The Taste of the Junction and Cinco de Mayo, at least in my opinion, those are promoting the heritage of Valley Junction. I know last year when we talked about this, we even talked, you know, and we got obviously denied because of COVID. We did talk about the amphitheater out here. So again, I just don't know why that wouldn't, wouldn't work to try this, see if it's going to materialize. It gives you a bigger space.
Yeah.
I think it's, I mean, that's what we designed this for.
Yeah.
Farmer's Market, Music in the Junction, again, that's because it's in the Historic Valley Junction Business District. I just think we've got other areas in the city that would be better suited for this.
Right.
And so I'm wondering why, why you didn't seek that out. I mean, you haven't, have you talked with anybody in Des Moines? I mean, wow, I just, again, I just struggle with, with shutting down the businesses down there.
Definitely, so, because the venue's beautiful, obviously. Like, the, you know, there's, it also costs, cuts costs as well as some lighting because of the little lighting you guys have around the trees, which is, you know, really, really beautiful. You know, it's a very vibrant, a lot like historic place. And like my type of event, like, it's something new to, that we're bringing, you know? It's never been done. Except for like, like with my kind of music, you know, like with the production I bring to stages. Because if, I mean, if you see my business page, I mean, I, you know, I throw big fiascos. And, you know, it's not, in something small and, you know, I think the people love it a lot. And it's just a venue that I've really fell in love with, honestly. And I would do any, like, everything to take care of it, especially, you know, of its historic significance. But, you know, I can assure you that my, the crowd that I bring is at rowdy. You know, we're going to have tables. People are going to be sitting down, eating, you know, enjoying the weather, just like they do on Thursday evenings every, every week, you know?
And this might, this might bring potential customers to Valley Junction that normally wouldn't come down absent your music. So you may be introducing new people.
Yeah, and then I have the vape shop setting up shop outside too, like, because, you know, obviously the young kids vape, you know? But yeah, they're, like, it would bring business over to the Historic Valley Junction.
Okay, looks like we, hang on.
Nice to meet you, actually. Yeah.
So Alan and I have actually been messaging back and forth here. Meredith Wells, Historic Valley Junction Board President. I did send an email out to our board this morning, Kevin's on our board. We are all for entrepreneurs. I mean, we are an entrepreneurial ecosystem down there. Our events that we host, you know, brings in people as well. Farmer's Market, the music goes until 8:30. We have had events before that have gone until 11 o'clock at night with the noise permit that you did apply for. Where we are a little concerned probably is just the preparedness about this. We found out about this last week. And Alan and I have been having multiple conversations back and forth about information, how to best kind of prepare this event, down to insurance and alcohol, trash, barricades, everything. There's a lot that goes into having our farmer's markets and even our events like the All Iowa Bash and Cinco de Mayo. So if it does get passed, we are happy to share those resources. On such a tight timeframe, it might be a little tricky. But we just want to make sure, we're not opposed to events being down there. We just want to make sure that they are prepared and executed to the best of their abilities so everyone benefits. Also, with the businesses being closed, the later we can push back that setup, the better. I did talk to some of the businesses that I think you weren't able to approach originally. And so Saturdays is the busiest day down there of the week. And so if we can prevent closing the street as much as possible, that'd be great. Even like set up as early as 2 PM if that's okay. So just to help protect that. And then it is a unique environment down there because we are surrounded by residents. You know, it's not just a business district. So we have the concern of the residents, whether it's going to be a loud environment, trash kind of littered all over the place and everything too. So that we definitely want to be very conscientious of as well.
So yeah, and just to go off on that, like, so I have, it's not just me, you know, I also have business partners that, you know, help out a lot. Like, you know, they throw the big music festivals in town. Those are my friends. And, you know, they're, they're backing me up as well. So like, they're, they're also investing in it too. So, so, you know, we got cleanup crews. We're gonna, if there's not enough trash cans, they'll use their resources as well to bring in more. And then, you know, if we need to get more kibos, they also have those, those connections as well. So it's not just like me, you know, I'm, it might look like I'm not prepared. But, you know, I'm trying to do this on my own and trying not, you know, learn as well. Because there's no book you can pick up and read how to throw, you know, a music event, you know? So it's, it's definitely a learning experience. But preparedness, we've been ready since last year, you know? But, but because of COVID, and I totally understand that. But I think, I think we are ready.
Okay. Well, I think we can take 3C12 and 4D actually together because it involved the same.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. So.
I had something to say.
Did you have something?
I want to get a motion and second final comments.
Okay.
I move, move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, final comments, Renee. Go for it.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I do appreciate having listened to this discussion. And I don't know you either. I'm just meeting you tonight and hearing what you have to do. And I appreciate folks bringing up the preparedness process. But we got to learn. I mean, you do stuff and you give people grace and you have people learn. And if there are things that they have promised they're going to do and they don't do, we kind of deal with that. For every person that has a venue at the, at this place, maybe we should have them sit here and talk about all the things that we're asking you to talk about tonight. Honestly, I want to be fair about this process, that there are tons of venues and things that happen at this particular location. And maybe we need to have them come in right, every time they want to have an event, and let's put them through this preparedness kind of questionnaire.
Have every time they've submitted in the very beginning.
Or maybe what we need to do is say, how many events are going to be down there this year? How many are going to be, you know, put on by Valley Junction? And how many outside groups are we going to allow to come in? Because it seems like it's very difficult to, to get into this. They kind of want to run their own thing, and that's it. Anybody else needs to be over here.
Yeah.
And I'm not critical, it's just that's, that's kind of the way it's.
I'm all for communication and collaboration and what you've all said here. But I'm also for entrepreneurial, like you said, opportunity for folks to try new venues. This is what we're all about. And so unless there's something, I don't know. Sure, we do have other places, but you've chosen this place, just like Cinco de Mayo has chosen, The Taste of the Junction. So.
Next event, I do, I'll do it at the amphitheater because I know you guys spent a lot of money on that.
Alan, I assume that, that you're going to put all of the passion that you obviously have for this, into this event and making it an incredibly successful event. And I assume that we'll probably support this here in a moment. Would this be something that you want to continue on a yearly? So that's even more incentive to make sure that this first one goes correctly. And I know that you're going to work with folks down in the junction. Hopefully, WhoVe will be involved. I think that would be, I think that would be great.
You talked a lot about you.
Is that your student that said you turned down my uncle's concert event?
Doesn't. And I'm glad that you understand because that was, that was a tough, that was a tough one last year.
I feel like, no, no personal thing. But I get it, I get.
But I think this could be a great event. And I know that you're going to do it with a lot of fidelity. You're going to do it correctly because, one, you want to build relationships in the community. And if you do plan on doing this in the future, then you want to make sure this first one goes incredibly, incredibly well, so.
Not holding to perfection on his very first one.
I.
We would not.
And you were very.
About that standard either.
We're very respectful and courteous of us last time we shot you down.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Alan.
I just, I just want everybody to know that I am not, because it's kind of been insinuated, I'm not against entrepreneurs. Okay, I think what you're doing is great.
You do.
Okay. I just, I think it's coming too quick. You said you've been ready since last, last year, but yet it's five days before and you're coming in for all of this stuff and still trying to get everything in line. And I still say that there's a better venue sitting right out here. And that's why I can't support this. I think it needs to be at the amphitheater where you've got a better setting for it.
But if that's true, Kevin, should we move every, every one of the concerts here then instead of Valley Junction? Is that what you guys want?
No.
I'm serious. Should we move them all here?
No.
Because this is a better venue.
You're missing, you're missing the point.
I'm not missing a point. I'm not missing a point.
Those are all based on the history of Valley Junction. That's where they're at. Historic Valley Junction exists only because of the railroad community and the businesses that came and residents that came from that. Taste in the Junction exists only because of the residents that moved in here to work the railroad. Same with Cinco de Mayo. So that's where they belong down in Valley Junction. I just think this one would fit better at the amphitheater. You, your opinion's different, we're entitled to our own opinions. So don't sit here and chastise me and tell me I'm wrong because I don't support it. But I don't want anybody to think I'm against entrepreneurs because I am not.
No, no, I don't think.
I'm not telling you're wrong, it's just inconsistent.
All right.
I guess I have one question for Vijay. How many events do you guys have down there where you close the streets? How many a year? Let me rephrase that.
Yes.
How many events go on a year where the streets are closed down?
There are quite a few events that happen. Um, every farmer's market, we close the, the street down.
You guys, are you in charge of the farmer's market?
Yes, we, we, we host a farmer's market, uh, Cinco de Mayo. We also host that. The All Iowa Bash.
You host that one?
Yes, correct. Any of the ones that we closed, any one of the ones that we closed down the street.
Okay, so the All Iowa Bash, is that historical Valley Junction related?
Yes, we, we, we put all that on.
Okay, but, but it involves more than just folks from Valley Junction. Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely.
So putting it on, to me, putting it on is one thing, but what it is for is another.
Yeah.
So just because you put it on, doesn't mean that it is indigenous to Historic Valley Junction. You're just putting it on.
Absolutely.
So I want to make that as a clear distinction. There are tons of events that happen that you might be putting on, but it has nothing to do with Historical Valley Junction. You're just putting it on.
Absolutely, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
No, and I, and I know we're on the same page. So this event, no, just one moment, Councilman Trimble. This event is no different than that.
Yeah.
It doesn't have Historical Valley Junction relevance necessarily, other than it's going to be there and hopefully draw people. But what does it have to do with Historical Valley Junction? So I just, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify that, that putting it on is one thing. It having Historical Valley Junction significance is another thing. So we want to be clear when we make that as an argument.
It seems, it seems to me that when the street gets shut down, you're putting it on. And if you're not putting it on, no street gets shut down.
Correct, typically.
That's what the issue is here.
I, and.
And that's what I think we need to look at.
And I think that's one of the issues, but there are other events that are, that are executed down there that, that we aren't uh, affiliated with or a part of. There's a chili cook-off down there. So we're, it's not that it has to be associated with Valley Junction or that it has to be tied to our heritage or anything.
But to get the street closed down, it has to be you.
Typically, but we have had events in Rebel Park before, like Taste of the Junction, um, that does close Rebel Park, um, during that time.
Right. The only way to get it closed down is if it goes through you. That's, that's what the issue is. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to pick on you. I'm not, I'm just saying it, it's hard for an outsider to get an, an event down in this venue. And, and I get that, that it should be that way to some extent because you got businesses down there that they don't even like closing down when you put the events up, right? So it's, it's kind of elbowing everybody out of here. If, if you're not part of VJ and you're, we're not putting on the event, you're an outsider and we're not going to close it down for you. And so I guess what I'm looking at as a councilman is I want to respect you guys and your businesses, but at the same time, allow for some opportunity, for some people like Mr. Castro to have an opportunity, maybe that's once or twice a year. Not too much, but so that it's not just Valley Junction driven that gets the street shut down, cause that doesn't seem right.
Right, and that's.
Absolutely.
Oh, to, to him in the first place, just say, hey, where are you at with this? And then also.
I appreciate that.
Like, hey, this is what we do, um, just to have, you know, where are you at with this and everything? So I'm happy to continue that dialogue with you as well.
But let me ask you a couple more questions. I don't mean to belabor this, but a couple of questions. What do you guys have in the way of crowd control down there when you have your events? Do you guys do something for crowd control?
So we do, um, at Music in the Junction, we have barricades at the, um, east end and west end of Rebel Park there. We also have two off-duty, uh, West Des Moines, um, police officers that help with security. Um, and we kind of have, you know, we have the barricades and everything. We block off the ends just to help control and then block off, there's an alleyway there. Um, cause anytime you have a beer garden, you have to not allow alcohol to leave that area. So we do kind of blockade and then have entrances and exits.
Okay, okay. So you got all that. I mean, we're, we're taking, we're taking a risk on you. I think, we think it's worth it.
Yeah.
But this is a big deal. It's a big deal to these businesses and to the foundation. Uh, we want to give you an opportunity, you know, we know that you can't control everything, but do everything you can to control the crowd and to control the noise. And, and, uh, I want to see you go after your dream here. And I, I think we need to have a conversation going forward with you all about, maybe we can allow one or two that, a year that is not controlled by VJ, where we can have the street shut down. But we do have to be sensitive to these businesses, business owners. I just don't think it's fair to box out everybody else.
Excellent. All right. Uh, so the motion is to approve four C twelve and four D. So please vote.
Three yes, one no.
All right, you're approved.
Go after that dream, buddy.
Thank you.
Go after that dream. I might be there singing with a band.
He'll ruin your event.
I will ruin it. People will see.
See if I'm available.
They'll leave.
Tell who they are.
All right, item five is old business, two items tonight, five A Galleria, six forty-five South Sixtieth Street. Amend the specific plan ordinance to designate, regulate regional commercial within lot one. Galleria, Jordan Creek, Platte Nine, Chili Peppers LLC. It's an order for the second, third reading, final adoption. There, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration to the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Four yes, North Des Moines City Code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, twenty nineteen, and ordinance number fifteen sixty-seven, nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty-five, and twenty-one sixty-seven pertaining to zone change, specific plan, district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval to the first reading.
Uh, second reading, uh, please vote.
Did I say first? Sorry. Move approval second.
Second.
Going backwards.
Or yes.
Uh, move waiver to the third reading, uh, and, uh, adoption in final form.
Okay, all right, please vote.
Four yes.
All right, item five B Majestic Oaks, northeast corner of Stageco's Drive and South Kingswood Court. Amend the plan unit development to revise the setbacks indicated for lot fourteen Majestic Land Company LLC. This also is an ordinance for the second, third reading and final adoption. There are no changes.
Move if you can say the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Four yes, North Des Moines City Code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, twenty nineteen, and ordinance number twenty-one forty-six pertaining to planning unit development, district regulations and guidelines.
Move to approve the second reading?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Move to waive the third reading, adopt a final form?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
All right, item six, public hearings. This, item six A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider West Town Shopping Center. West side of twenty-second street between I two thirty-five and West Town Parkway. Establish the West Town Shopping Center Plan Unit Development to govern development of the existing shopping center initiated by West Town Center Associates LLC. This was continued from the, the July sixth, uh, city council agenda. Uh, Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
June eighteenth, twenty twenty-one in the Des Moines Register.
Received any written comments?
The Planet Zoning Commission by a vote of seven yes adopted a resolution recommending approval of the PUD ordinance.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience who'd like to address the city council on item six A. All right, welcome.
Hello, good evening, Todd Wescus with Simonson and Associates Architects, Des Moines, Iowa, seventeen seventeen Angersall. And I believe we also have on the phone, uh, representative of the ownership group, Aaron Mesmer. I don't know if you can hear him. Aaron, are you out? Are you there?
Can you hear me?
You unmute with star six.
Can you hear me?
He can speak up.
Can you hear me?
Star six, Aaron, if you're on, press star six. We'd love to hear from you.
Not pound six. That's the mistake everybody makes. They're hitting the pound and six and they're not getting unmuted.
Guess he's not there.
Is, is Aaron under? Not hashtag six.
Aaron, do we hear you?
He's star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry about that. I was, uh, star six too many times, apparently. It will mute, it will mute you back if you, uh, if you, if you hit it more than once. So, um, glad to be on and, and appreciate council's time. I'm Aaron Mesmer, uh, West Town Center Associates. We're fourteen hundred to sixteen hundred twenty-second, twenty-second street. Um, we're here tonight to make a presentation about what we think is going to be a terrific upgrade to the West Town Shopping Center and really continue the momentum that we have going with, uh, floor and decor, uh, which is really the first phase of what we think is a, a two-phase renovation of the center. So if we could go to the next slide, please?
Sure.
Most of you are probably familiar, West Town Center is a hundred and eighty thousand square foot multi-tenant shopping center with fifteen national and local, uh, tenants there on the northwest corner of twenty-second and two thirty-five. Are you able to switch the slides?
I think so. Are you guys seeing a site plan there?
Okay.
Nope.
We still see the introductory slide right now.
These virtual meetings are great when they work.
Yeah.
I, I'm in Iowa, but I'm.
There we go. There we go.
Yeah, glad we're, glad we're now moving. So anyway, uh, we've got a multi-tenant shopping center. Uh, what used to be the home of Gordmans is now the home of Floor and Decor, who opened on, uh, June twenty-third. So we're, we're very excited about that. And then we've got a number of other thriving businesses, uh, throughout the shopping center. Next slide, please. Part of why we're here is we're, we're working on a PUD plan, um, that would allow us to, um, parcel the property into different parcels. That was requested when we went to do the McDonald's, um, reparsaling because it had actually a line, a lot line right to the middle of the building. Uh, so as we went through the facade renovation, uh, it was appropriate to do this along with the creation of the pad site that is on the southeast corner, right at the interchange of the interstate and twenty-second street there. That would be a new pad, uh, that's being created as part of this process. Next slide, please. So what you see here is a few aerial renditions and we've got quite a few photos that we want to share with you tonight. Um, Clark and his team have done a great job and Simonson have, have given us really good views of what it's going to look like. Uh, but what we have planned for the shopping center is a totally new, uh, facade with, with newly framed, um, entry portals, new columns, obviously new headers, you know, getting rid of the old nineteen seventies look. Uh, this built, this building's built nineteen seventy. And so wanted to do something that really takes West Town Center and brings it into, um, competition with today's modern shopping centers. Uh, it's got a modern color scheme and the total project cost here of the entire renovation is around four and a half million. Um, just want to point that out because that's all being funded by the, by the owners of the shopping center. Uh, next slide, please. So this will give you a good look about what Floor and Decor was like before and after, uh, when it was previously the Gordmans and then what it looks like today with their new facade. Um, they did, like I said, open on June twenty-third. Uh, they did the new facade there. They did a new, uh, tower element on the southeast portion of the building. Uh, we improved the parking lot and we, we added landscaping there. Uh, next slide, please. So these are just some other views, uh, on the front side of the center. And then if you go to the next side, what you'll see here is on the west part of the shopping center, we actually were pretty much just gravel, um, on the backside. And so one of the things that we did as part of the floor and decor renovations is we actually cleaned up the entire west portion and created a drive aisle of completely asphalted surface. They have very heavy trucks that are coming in and out of there, filled with tile and other building materials. And so it's really important to them to be able to, um, have that access completely upgraded. Uh, and so we did that as part of what we called the phase one renovations. Uh, next slide, please. So what we're gonna do now is just kind of click through what we think are, are some, uh, photos and renderings of what the shopping center will look like. So if we could, we just spend a few seconds on each one and then we'll go to the next one and I'll probably just talk throughout it. This is a great comparison of what's there today and then what we believe it will look like based on the, uh, the facade renovation that we're about to do. This is a comparison of the sign that's there today and an image showing what the signage will look like when it's replaced uh, with something that is more modern, uh, that also includes tenant names and allows for them to get their presence really up there on twenty-second and, and visible from two thirty-five as well. And these are just some different angles of the renovation. So we can kind of click through these relatively quickly. This is the view of Floor and Decor from the new pad site. I think what you're seeing here is just the overall appearance, um, kind of being upgraded, bringing into that modern feel. We think that's going to help drive traffic to the shopping center. We feel like it's going to drive sales tax for the city of West Des Moines. Uh, and overall, it, it really sends a message to the surrounding property owners that, um, this is an area worth making continued investment. And, um, and it's still a vibrant trade center, um, you know, despite the challenges of retailers today. So as we work through the process, um, because we're coming back in with the PUD, you know, there was a, an effort to bring the property up to current code. And, and I can say that since February, uh, we've been working with staff and our design teams to try to do that in a way that allowed us to take a property that was built in nineteen seventy and, and bring it as far up to what we could do today. Um, there's still a few remaining challenges with regards to a request for a driveway on the southwest. And then we've got two options for you from a signage perspective. And we're gonna let you guys kind of decide between the two and, and what you think is most appropriate. But I will say, as we work through the process, um, I feel like we did a good job of making a lot of accommodations where it was possible, where our leases would allow it to be possible, where it was practical to do. Um, and so what you'll see here as far as the accommodation goes, we are moving the direction of one of the parking aisles. We're restriping, uh, parking where it's possible to try to meet the current, uh, depths of the spaces. We're adding landscaped islands and green areas where there's currently just striped, uh, end caps. And then we're continuing with the stormwater management agreement that's already in place, uh, that we'll be carrying forward. Uh, the new pad that's being built on the south, southeast corner will be fully compliant when it's, when it's fully developed. And then we also dedicated additional right-of-way, uh, as part of this process on twenty-second street and on West Town Parkway, um, to make sure the city had what it needed, uh, for future access and roadway. So on the remaining challenges, we'll get to those in just a second. I do want to skip one more slide to show you where the new parking islands will be. The, the city would really like to see more green space. We think this is a big plus too. It puts, um, it beautifies the landscaping in front of the tenants and, and it's more consistent with what you'd see in a modern shopping center. So in areas where we have striped landscape beds, uh, we're certainly happy to put those in and just make them, um, a, a better benefit for the shopping center and, and, uh, for the overall feel and aesthetics. As far as the challenges go, we really have two things that we're looking to, uh, adjudicate here tonight. They, they came as part of staff recommendation, which were then passed by, uh, planning and zoning, uh, at our last meeting. And there are two that we feel pretty strongly about, or we wouldn't be making the case for you today. But now the first of those is a connection, a vehicular connection, um, not a pedestrian connection, but a vehicular connection from the southwest portion of our shopping center to the office project, um, on the, on the west side of our property. And this is a connection that hasn't existed in the fifty-one years, uh, that we've had the property. It hasn't existed in the forty-plus years that that office building's been built there. Uh, but it's something that staff is requesting and we, we understand their, their need to sort of check the box and make sure they're following the overarching plan goals. But, um, there's, there are several real issues with this potential connection. The first, if you look at the, the yellow area on the map here, that is the proposed vehicular connection. Um, so that would connect the office parking lot with the southwest corner of our parking lot. One of the issues is this is a protected drive in the Floor and Decor lease. So that driveway where you see it in red is where their large trucks, their fifty-three foot trucks come in and they offload tons and tons and tons of tile, flooring and other construction products. So there's a natural conflict there. Uh, there's also, uh, a lease default from a landlord standpoint if we infringe on their protected drive in the lease agreement. And so we've got safety concerns with large trucks and office parking cars. Uh, we also feel like if you look at the call out, uh, it shows that there are parking spaces that back up into that dry aisle. And that's appropriate in a shopping center. Um, in most cases here in the, in the shopping center, we have parking spaces that back up into that area. In a situation where the intent is to move traffic from the office to twenty-second street and then back out onto the two thirty-five, uh, we feel like there's also safety concerns with people backing out of those spaces with people leaving the office at the end of the day. Um, and so there's, there's more safety concerns from that standpoint. The other thing that's important to note is that in a PUD agreement, there is some limits with regard to traffic. And one of the things that is part of the agreement that we're agreeable to is that there are limits to what uses can be put in a shopping center based on reasonable traffic constraints at the time that, uh, we have those, uh, potential uses. Well, if we're funneling a huge amount of PM peak traffic, because. Well, if we're funneling a huge amount of P M peak traffic, because people are leaving the office building at five o'clock, and they're all leaving there at the same time, and it's the fastest route to skip through our property, go between the, the two different pad sites and get out onto two thirty-five, it could really have an impact on what uses we're allowed to do in the future. Um, so that, that we think is problematic. Uh, if we go to the next slide, please. There are a couple of other things here. Um, one of the other things that's not really noted or called out is there's actually a pretty significant grade change between the properties. Um, the property of the west sits up significantly higher than our property. And as you look at appropriate slopes, especially in times when you have ice and things like that, uh, we, we really can't be in a position where we have a slope on the backside of our shopping center, um, that would be needed to accommodate the length of the driveway to, to do an appropriate degree of grade change that would make it safe. Again, because we've got trucks coming in and out of there, they need to stay flat and on grade. There's no existing access easements or maintenance agreements in place. And one of the things that's important to note about that is that there's really not a shopping center customer that is going to go west through the parking lot of the office building. If you are shopping at Michael's or Dollar Tree and you need to go west on West Town Parkway, you're most likely to go north, exit the shopping center, West Town Parkway, and go west. It's not natural for somebody to want to just drive through an office parking lot to then go to West Town Parkway. However, it would create a path that would immediately go from the southeast corner of their property through our property, uh, adjacent to the pad site and ride out on two thirty-five. And so we think that there's a disparate impact there where their users would be utilizing our driveways, and our users would really have no use for their driveways or their connections. Um, so without a maintenance agreement in place, we're taking care of a roadway for the office user, uh, or the office ownership. Um, and they're not asking for this, by the way. They don't, they don't really see it, you know, they haven't publicly said, hey, we see a benefit here. We want this. We think this is something we really need. They functioned that office building for decades without this. Um, and so, you know, there's just a lot of reasons why this is problematic, and it's just something that we feel like we really would prefer not to have. Um, but it's, it's something that we're going to need your, your feedback on here tonight. Uh, the next issue that we have, if we want to go to the next slide, pertains to the, um, pertains to the internet interstate sign and, and kind of the options that we have there. And so if Scott Lipovac is on, uh, I'm going to give him the opportunity to talk about that. He's our partner in the West Town Shopping Center. Um, and he, he really has, um, you know, a better handle on sort of the signage and the modern retail criteria and so forth. So, uh, Scott, if you want to, if you want to start six and maybe weigh in here on the, on the interstate sign part of this, I think that would be helpful. I don't know if the technology's not working for Scott or not. Okay. Well, if it doesn't, um, then I can go ahead and kind of speak through this. But what we've done here is we, we have the ability to, um, to utilize, uh, three different signs under the current ordinance. So by, by right, we can put two interstate signs on the project at two hundred square feet apiece. And then we also have the ability to do a sixty-four square foot monument sign on the newly created.
Aaron, I think we lost you.
Scott, if you're on the line, you could press star six.
Scott, if you're there.
What is technology doing? You're going to tell us tonight.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Right? Okay. I don't know if there was a timeout function or whatnot, but it, it just came in and said I was muted. But, um, uh, anyway, we, we have by right the ability to do two highway signs. Um, those are two hundred square feet apiece. And then we also have the right to do a, a monument sign for the, the second lot here, lot number two, that would be created at the northwest, uh, corner of Twenty-Second and, and two thirty-five. And what we've done is we've prepared two options. One would be an option where we have three signs with a total of four hundred and sixty-four square feet. And the other option is one where we would have one sign, uh, and that's the one pictured here. And that would include the square footage of each of those. So it's exactly four hundred and sixty-four square feet of, of copy area, um, or facade area, whatever the measurement is. And so, uh, if you go to the next slide, please. What you can see on this one is there's, uh, little blue dots on the top. There's three of those. And that's where we would put our two monument signs along with the, or two interstate signs along with the monument sign along lot two. And the proposal here would be to consolidate that square footage, um, right there, um, in that location that we've shown on the, on the lower side. We do understand there's been a lot of talk about signage in West Des Moines, and we want to be respectful of that, which is why we're coming with options. Um, we think that the one sign has a more attractive aesthetic. That's why we're proposing it. We, we have a point of view here. Um, we'll, we'll certainly go with whatever the will of the council is, but we, we do think that if the council wanted to create a precedent for consolidating interstate signage, uh, one way to do that would be to, to limit it to multi-tenant centers. So there can't be a single user. You have to have at least a hundred thousand square feet. You have to have at least five hundred linear feet of interstate frontage, and you would not get any more signage square footage than you would have otherwise been allowed using multiple signs. Um, so we tried to craft something that we felt like was a reasonable precedent. And I think that really limits the number of instances where this could be used in the future. So that's, that's something that, like I said, we, we do have an opinion, and we feel like that's a better option. If we can go to the next slide, please. You can see the difference between the, the three signs. The one on the far left is what would be on the, on the monument at lot number two. Um, the one in the middle, we would have two of those potentially. And so the three of those combined would be what's allowed by ordinance today, and that's what we would put up. Uh, the one on the right is slightly larger, as you can see, and it's, it's a little bit taller and a little bit wider. Um, but we do think that it matches what you see in most municipalities where you have a large shopping center, a hundred eighty thousand square feet, over twenty acres of land. We have almost nine hundred square feet of frontage along the interstate. And so, like I said, we feel like this is a better option. We're certainly willing to, um, look for feedback from the council and hope that we provided maybe the best case for allowing this under a, a precedent scenario. Um, but we'll, we'll be happy to entertain a conversation there. So, uh, next slide, please.
Before, can I ask a quick question, Mayor?
Sure.
Of the sign, is that forty-eight, is that forty-eight feet versus thirty feet when you say a little bit taller?
Thirty-eight feet versus thirty feet. So it's eight feet taller.
So eight feet taller?
Correct.
Pretty significant.
I've, I've, I've got a.
I want to make sure I get out the public hearing done first before. So, um, Aaron, anything else you want to finish up? And then I'm going to see if there's any other public comments.
Yeah, I think we're pretty much wrapping up. Um, if you want to skip through the next, we just did an enlarged deal so that you could see where those sign locations were. Uh, but again, I know we're talking about the southwest connection. I know we're talking about signage a little bit, but I do want to say like, we're, we're super excited to be in West Des Moines. Uh, we, we appreciate the speed with which the staff worked to help get the floor and decor deal done. Um, that was really important to making that work and really bringing life back to the shopping center. We want to continue that momentum. We're willing to spend our money to do it, and we think that there's a big public benefit there. So, uh, we appreciate your time and, and for listening to the presentation, and certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. All right. So, uh, anyone else? I'll continue the public hearing. Anyone else want to address the council on item six A? I don't see anyone. I don't hear anyone. I know Lynn, do you want to give the staff perspective on these two? We'll find out if the council's got questions.
Thank you, Todd.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Before she does, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the layout here and a comment that's in the staff report and, and have a little bit of an issue in regards to the sign with that and the precedent that would be setting. And basically what's been allowed when other people have asked for something similar, and it looks like they've had to deal with our ordinance that is in place and that we haven't made exceptions for them. So we could get some heat, make an exception here, but.
Well, I think the other thing, Russ, is we've spent years updating the sign code at various times to accommodate larger developments. So I, I know we've all got battle scars about trying to deal with signage. And, um, with sixty-some thousand businesses in West Des Moines and with retail centers that are way off the beaten path, who want signage that are, is on the main corridor, I'd, I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to say that I've got heartburn over any changes. Everybody needs to meet the sign code because just a few years ago, we spent a long time updating it to try to make it more acceptable. And since we've done that, I don't, I can't recall one complaint about the sign code since then.
What I'm looking at in the report that, that gives me problems, says staff could find no instance of when interstate signs were allowed to exceed provision stated in code. Additionally, other properties have modified their lot layouts to achieve the necessary frontage to be, uh, allowed additional signs. Claim doc, staff did not provide any provisions in the P U D different from city code other than the allowance from any tenant to be identified.
Why don't we let? And I guess I, I just have one thing. I, something must be wrong. I see it as forty-eight feet. When you said thirty-eight, there's forty-eight here. Is that a typo?
Forty-eight in the staff report language or on the.
In the pinky I'm looking at. It says forty-eight. We said height to forty-eight. I think the gentleman said thirty-eight.
This has changed.
No, no, that has not changed.
It, it is thirty-eight feet in height. I don't know if the original plan, I see where you're talking about.
Yeah.
If the original plan actually was higher and they have made modifications, but I, I don't know if, uh, Aaron could potentially claim that. But it, the proposal is for a thirty-eight foot tall sign.
And how much wider?
Pinky.
Um, it's eight feet wider than we would allow. So by code, you can do a ten foot and then thirty feet as the maximum height. What they're proposing is eighteen feet wide with a thirty-eight foot. On our signs tend that ten by thirty, if you're a single tenant, we already have provisions in our code for single tenant versus multi-tenant. You get the same size sign structure, so ten foot wide, thirty feet, up to thirty feet tall. You can have a hundred square feet of copy area if you're a single tenant, uh, development, and you get two hundred square feet of copy area if you're a multi- tenant development. We have had, nobody complained about our, our interstate signage. Most of it is in our office districts, but we have not had any complaints from anyone else that they needed more signage. It, it, they just needed it.
But in this case, they're not getting more signage. They're getting one sign versus three. So that's where I'm a little confused is where, what's.
We have never combined anyone else's signs to just say, here's what you get for the property. Go put wherever, what you.
But in a P U D, we could.
It would be.
You make a lot of changes in P U Ds all the time to make it, make something fix.
Starting a precedent that I'm not sure that we wanted to go down of, all of a sudden, we're increasing the size of every sign because I may have two along a frontage, and if I want to put them both on one, your, your size keeps inching up and inching up.
It's a very creative solution. I, I will give you that. It is a very creative solution. And, you know, when I first heard it, I thought that it made some sense, but it seems like the sign is just way bigger than anything that we've ever approved. It's eight, eight feet taller and eight feet wider.
Yes.
Well, look at the size of the retail centers we have, or the office parks we have. We have a million square foot office parks. So now you're going to go and say, I want to take my eight signs and combine them into one that's the size of a drive-in movie theater. So, I mean, a- again, this, this whole sign thing's a slippery slope. I, I, the, the whole connection on the southwest doesn't make any sense to me, but the sign, the sign thing's got me.
I'm fine with the, I'm fine with not having the connection, uh, there. Um, you know, I don't know if we need to put anything in, in code saying, uh, you know, they don't have to do the connection now unless the city requires it for, uh, traffic or circulation purposes in the future. Or if the tenants, the two different tenants agree to do that. I don't think having one tenant agree to do it and then the other having to live by it makes any sense.
At this point, that is all the P U D states, that at such a time that it is requested that it will be put in. So that is what the P U D says today. They are not being asked to put in that connection today. If the office development ever does some kind of modification and, and at that time we have that discussion and that connection is made, that's when that would happen. We don't know if that will ever happen, but we're set up to have that opportunity in the future.
But would both parties have to agree to that?
It'd be put back to you.
To be.
Quite honestly, at that point.
To be clear, they're saying that we're bound by that in the future.
We would make that recommendation, and then at that point, we would have that discussion. Both parties are saying, no, it really would be up to the council to determine, is there a benefit?
To Aaron's point, they've spent a ton of money renovating that end, and it makes no sense. Does, is it Century Two that gets to make the election, or is it Century One, Two, and Three that all have to make the election?
It would, that's a good question.
Yes, because there's three different parcels.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there are three different parcels, I guess I would, Brian, I don't know if you have a thought on that. We would probably say the one that it's actually making that physical connection.
That would give it to Century Two. I mean, they've never asked for it in forty years.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense. And, and Aaron, they've spent so much money. It just doesn't, to me, there, that connection is, is, it creates more issues than it involves.
I, I can see why we want it, but I agree with the mayor. They, they really are investing quite a bit of money in here, and I'm willing to concede on that one.
Century Two for forty years has never asked for it.
Yeah.
This is going to be a hell of an improvement to the.
I don't see it being used. I, I, I.
Yeah, it's expensive to make. It's expensive to maintain. It, it messes around with the center. The office building for forty years has never asked for it. Quite frankly, if I was in, aren't our own Century Three, if I owned Century Two, I don't want the commercial people cutting through my office parking lot either. Um, or I don't want my office people cutting through theirs. I mean, that, that connection makes no sense to me.
Well, the language today is just basically ensuring that opportunity in the future is what that language does.
Suppose if you had a huge public safety concern, the city could come in and ask for it, but I don't know what the, I, I think you create more of a public safety concern by opening it up than you would by not having it.
I, I disagree. I don't know. Can you hear me? Because I, I disagree with the idea that this is not.
Which I was surprised to hear that. Like I told him, it's probably been since I was in high school and I was back behind that building. But, um, so I had no idea that there was a stub going out there. I don't know when it got put in. He says that there's a site plan dates back to the nineties that it's there. But again, I, I think it just needs to go away. I don't see it ever being used. Like the mayor said, it's, those build, office buildings have been there since mid-eighties. And I don't see anybody using it from the office, and I sure don't see anybody using it from the retail. So I just think that's, if, that, that stub can go away, that this language goes out of it, and everybody's got their own individual parking lots. And as was stated, if public safety comes to us in the future and says, because of safety reasons, we have to have this, then we re-address it. But I can't even imagine what it'd take to construct a driveway that goes through to those office complexes because of the difference in elevation. So I, I, I think it needs to go away.
Brian, can you explain? I mean, we want to try to have interconnections whenever possible, right? I mean, that's our goal. Get, get some traffic off of the city streets, uh, and try to get rid of some of the congestion on city streets. I mean, what, what are some of the scenarios that you see in the future that we would require this, this interconnection?
Brian Hammersass, City Engineer, uh, well, scenarios that, that would require the interconnection would be if the, uh, office complex comes in next door, uh, for any kind of a modification. That, that would be the, the scenario that we would make that, the stub that's currently there connect to the office park.
So if, i- it, what is that, Century Two?
Yes.
So if Century Two has a major modification, then that connection will be required?
That's, that's been our, that's been our precedent over, e- e- ever since I've been working here.
Okay.
It just. What constitutes a major change or a major?
Modification.
A major modification and anything over two thousand square feet of, um, building area.
Addition.
That it's just exclusively additions. It doesn't involve renovations, though.
Or more than two minor modifications.
Right.
But what if Century Two doesn't want the connection?
They, they know about it right now.
Then we would, then our recommendation that would be that it would go, and then, then if they don't want it, they could come here and plead their case to you.
I mean, I, if I'm Century Two, I worry about people cutting from the commercial through to, to Twenty-Eighth Street to get out going westbound because they can't get out on Twenty-Second Street. It's a challenge now. Some of those lines, some of those roads don't line up. I think there's a higher probability that the retail people would use the cut-through than the office people would ever use it. They've got great access now. They have a captive Twenty-Eighth Street and West Town Parkway and Thirty-Fifth Street. I mean, they've got great access for those office buildings right now. I think you're creating huge issues for the potentially, not only Aaron, but the office people.
But it seems like the policy in general has been a good one and has served us well, right? I mean, we want to have better circulation within these sites, move some of the traffic off of the city streets, um, free up congestion there. But it's just maybe in this case, it seems like there's a, I don't say hardship, but a little bit of a hardship and, uh, difficulty and pretty massive expense, given the difference in grades in trying to construct this. And then i- is it just Century Two that would, I mean, who would, who would pay for this? And then, is it just Century Two that would, I mean, who would, who would pay for this if and when this is needed? Is it Century Two because they triggered it, they pay for it? Or is it a, a shared cost between Century Two and Westtown, or?
It, it typically be a shared cause. It would be on each other's, whoever, whatever's on Century Two's property versus whatever's on, on Westtown Center.
But it's a private drive. So what do you do about public safety? You got all these big trucks coming in and out, you're going to have bikes using it? I mean, what do you do about public safety down on a private street? You're going to make them build a private street that creates public safety potential conflicts.
But really, what we want to do is just maintain the option. I mean, that's your discretion. We have the option to do that. It doesn't necessarily mean we would ever do that. We'd have to show that the circulation was needed through a traffic study to keep it off the main road. So I think all we're trying to say is, and obviously, I don't think it's going this direction, is that we would maintain the option, and at such time as it might be necessary to have that circulation, the city wouldn't be forced into a situation where we'd have to condemn it or buy it. It would just be a.
Brian said it was going to be triggered by two thousand square-foot major modification or two minor modifications of Century Two, then the city would require it.
Well, we would require.
Whether they wanted it or not. And so that's why I'm saying tonight, let's just do away with it. Doesn't seem like anybody in forty years has wanted it. I can't see anybody in another forty years asking for it. Of course, at that time, I'll be dead, so I'll never know, but.
Be more optimistic, man.
Unless I live to be a hundred, I just don't see it happening.
They, what we would require is that they, we'd have the ability to have that put in. We wouldn't necessarily force it be put in. Would just be both sides would have it in their condition of approval, that if the circulation was found to be necessary, we would say, you've got to put this in. It wouldn't necessarily mean we would do that, it would just, we would maintain that option.
But Dick, I mean, the sites are both fully developed. If, to me, if it was required, it, because the commercial people want to cut through the office, not the other way around.
Not by, be a reason why you would never want to do it. I think we're just trying to maintain the option to do it if you, if it's necessary.
Because I agree that the option is Century Two. It has nothing to do with, with the current owner, Aaron's company.
Well, no, it's really the.
Century Two can require Aaron's company to build it.
The option is the city's to exercise their police power to maintain, maintain circulation off, off the public streets.
You've already got it.
What we're trying, we're trying to maintain the option, but, I mean, I'm just giving you the.
Well, maybe, maybe the compromise position, I mean, we're talking about either all or nothing here. Maybe the compromise position is, is where I started out, where we say, leave, leave that in there, but also require agreement by both parties. I, I mean, that's better than.
Do this all over the place.
Better than striking it out, but I don't think we should.
It doesn't necessarily mean it's necessary. You're going to find that the circulation is necessary to, to have that back, so.
I don't know, two developments like this for this long with these impediments to it on private, I mean, I, I can't think of another. I know we got all kinds of interconnects, but they make a whole lot more sense than this one.
Yes.
May I just interject something?
Please.
Where's Ben?
Today, we had a meeting with Sarah Disneyhoff with the Sam Schwartz, they're doing the work for the University Avenue Corridor Study. One of the things that she's talked about is the fact that there's a severe lack of, of residential and apartments in this area to try to revive the University Avenue Corridor Study. This, this very center and, and the office complex next door are in those areas. There's a lot of vacancies in that office complex. The office complex may not be office forever. That's, that's one of those things where they, there could be an interjection of potential residential into that area, and to throw away the, the opportunity to have a connection there, and if there's residential next door, you know, like an apartment complex or something of that sort, that would be a good synergy between, between a, an apartment complex and a, and a, and a retail center such as this.
Brian, what's the elevation difference in that? From, from West Town Place?
It's a couple of feet, but it's, it's.
It's a couple feet?
It's, it's.
It's quite a bit more than that.
It's a couple feet. Two feet, three feet?
Try again, Brian.
Okay.
I, I, I just don't see where it's even feasible to build it.
And I don't know why you would want to put residential traffic through the back of that center with those trucks. I mean, we're all about public safety and trying to keep people out of conflict situations. To me, you're just driving people into a huge safety problem to say, now you can cut through the back of this center on a private street?
It doesn't, oh, go ahead.
It's, no, I'm, I, I just, that was something that I thought was, was important to the conversation, and I just, I thought I'd bring it up.
It seems like if both parties want it and they're willing to split the costs, we ought to entertain it. Absent that, to me, the thing ought to go away.
And I, for one, trust future councils and future city staff conversations to make the right decision. Nobody up here appears to want this right now, and so I don't think that's on the table at all. And so what Russ said, I don't think it doesn't preclude this from happening in the future. If for some reason, there are apartments there, and for some reason, this, twenty-five years down the road, when McKitty, when McKinney's kid is on city council, and she can make that decision, but for, for, he's not here, I can't say that.
Kevin is dead.
But, but for right now, I, I like Russ's idea, and I, I.
Still alive at least.
I move for.
All right. You want to make a motion, Russ?
I, I, yes, I, well, I move that we keep the sign, keep, keep the sign ordinance the way that it is.
So they need to comply?
They've got to comply with their sign ordinance. But that we modify the current requirement for an interconnect such that at a time when the city requires it and both property owners agree.
And share the cost.
And share the costs.
The cost. That will flush out how much the office user wants.
That it will get.
Yes, it will flush it right out.
So we still have the ability to do it, but they've got to get together and they've got to agree to it. And I think if we're having an issue at that time, they'll probably want to work with us.
Got a motion on the.
Get that.
Second, okay.
Long-winded motion.
All right. Any other comments? We got a lot yet to go through, so.
Can we make it clear what this motion is one more time, just so everybody's on the same page?
Say it again?
I am.
Okay, so briefly, we're, we're going to, we're going to deny the, the request for amendment to our signed ordinance. They're going to have to comply with the signed ordinance.
Yeah.
But we are going to amend what is currently there to say that they have to put in the driveway connection at a time that, that the city requires it and upon approval of both property owners.
Share the cost.
Share the cost, and, and to both want the access.
And both want it.
All right.
I think this is a unique situation that calls for that. I think our policy in places makes sense other places.
Clarification, is that with a major modification?
With, that's what calls for. Major modification or safety concerns, yes.
That as long as the, it can be raised to see if it's wanted, if they're not in agreement at that time, it just defers again till such time.
Or maybe we say with a major modification, if there's safety concerns, there's safety concerns. That does not, they don't need to agree it's happening.
Yeah, I, I'd love to see the report that says opening that up solves a safety problem.
Agreed, agreed, but I don't think we want to have, say there's a safety issue, do you guys agree? And they say no.
All right.
So.
All right, let's vote, please.
Thank you.
Or yes, nor in submitting the official zoning map in the city code of City West Des Moines, Iowa, twenty nineteen by admitting Title Nine Zoning, Chapter Nine Planning Development District pertaining to PUD District Regulations and Guidelines.
Where in the world even are we? Move consideration of the, move approval of the first reading?
Yep, you got it.
Yep, so it's, it's, the motion is to approve the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Man, we're squirrely tonight.
Or yes.
Okay, so then, in two weeks, I know there was an issue about waiver, but so in two weeks, we can do the second and third reading together since there's no negative vote. Okay. Item six B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the agreement for private development initiated by Innovative Injection Technologies, Inc. and Triple J Logistics, LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July ninth, twenty twenty-one, in the Des Moines Register.
Received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Right now be the time for anyone in the audience to like to address the city council on item six B. All right, seen no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. There, there's no outstanding issues, and this came through Finance and Administration Committee with the unanimous recommendation.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Or yes.
Item six C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider eighteen-hundred Industrial Circle conveyance of a storm sewer easement to Triple J Logistics, LLC, initiated by the City West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the Des Moines Register.
Received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience to like to address the city council on item six C. Seen no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, this is a resolution to approve the conveyance of property interest, there's no outstanding issues.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Or yes.
Six D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider West Grand Business Park, sixteen oh five South Sixtieth Street, conveyance of an underground electric easement to Mid-American Energy Company, initiated by the City West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the Des Moines Register.
Received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience to like to address the city council on item six D. All right, seen no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve the conveyance of the property.
Move approval.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Or yes.
Six E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider South Grand Prairie Parkway, Stagecoach Drive to Grand Avenue, initiated by the City West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July ninth, twenty twenty-one, in the Des Moines Register.
Received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Right now be the time for anyone in the audience to like to address the city council on item six E. Seen no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments?
Exciting, let's get this thing built.
All right, please vote.
Or yes.
Item seven, new business, seven A, Oaks on Grand, fifty-seven twenty-five, fifty-seven forty-five, and fifty-seven eighty-five, Raccoon River Drive. Approve a final plat to create two lots for office development, one street lot, JCG Equity, LLC. It's a resolution to accept assurity and approval and release of the final plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Or yes.
Seven B, West Glen Village North, forty, uh, four fifty, South Prairie View Drive. Approval of preliminary plat to create a hundred and eighty-four footprint lots for development, one outlot for common ground, one outlot for stormwater management, and one outlot for parkland. WD Real Estate Holdings, Inc. It's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval of preliminary plat. Second.
Questions or comments?
Here we got, um, what does it say, a hundred and eighty-four footprint lots? And that's, uh, that's a lot of new residents, that's a lot of new, uh, students for West Des Moines schools, so it's nice to see this happen.
I just hope that private access drive gets upgraded. I get more complaints everywhere about the condition of that private drive. I mean, they put up signs that name the potholes are so deep.
Yes.
So, um, I'm, I'm hoping that the developer improves that private drive so that functions more like a city school, they can avoid those huge issues back there.
Yeah, no, I agree. I've heard, I've heard comments on that, I've heard comments on the lighting, just recently one of the lights fell over and it just laid there with the electricity going through it forever, and, but I will say, staff has been phenomenal in staying on top of that developer and, and calling and asking them to, to take steps to get things done, and sometimes they've moved quickly and sometimes it's taken a little bit longer, but I've got to give kudos to staff on that, and they recently got a shout-out on, on Facebook for it, so.
Lynn Tuit, Director of Development Services. City code would say if you're serving more than four residential dwellings, you have to build it to public street standards. So even though it's a private street, it'll be rebuilt and it'll be, have to be maintained by them. It will still be maintained by them, but a little bit more directive.
I was going to say, if it's built right, then you won't have all those issues. And in fairness, because I've talked to Mr. Bulver a couple of times, he's had a stop sign stolen like five times. So it's not like he doesn't, he's not trying, I mean, it's, it's a challenge. So hopefully with all the development back there, that'll, okay.
Will that be widened as well compared to where it is right now?
Code, so it'll be the, just like a public street. It can be the twenty-six feet wide on this, I mean, for a local.
This is, this is great to get that developed.
Oh, yes. My gosh, it's sat for so long.
All right, please vote on seven B. I won't miss the names of the potholes, because I'm pretty creative.
Or yes.
Signs.
I'll have a lot more doorknob in the.
Okay, seven C, Millridge Plat Five, south of Harper Lane, along South Ninety-second Street and South Radley Street. Approval of preliminary plat to create thirty-one lots for single-family residential development, one outlot and two street lots. Millridge Home LLC, it's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat, and I think it was just to correct, to add two additional lots that weren't on the original plat. So I don't believe there's any issues.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments?
I just realized when I was looking through this that it's all characters from To Kill a Mockingbird down there. It's not my ward, but anytime you have a street named after Boo Radley, that's exciting, so I'm supportive for other reasons as well, but I just realized that the other day.
Well, we've missed a history teacher. We could, yeah, we would have never known.
All the lessons, all the free lessons we're getting.
All right, I appreciate that, that makes it more interesting. All right, please vote.
Worth as much as you paid for this.
All right.
Or yes.
Seven D, Fox Ridge Townhome, south of Veterans Parkway and west of Fox Valley Development. Approval of site plan to allow construction of a hundred and thirty-six townhome units. Forester USA Real Estate Group, Inc. This is a resolution to approve the site plan, and I know, Lynn, the staff's raised some issue on, on, want more information on the architecture. So you want to, well, first of all, let me see if the applicant wants to make any comments to the city council, and then, Lynn, it might be helpful for you to walk us through the suggested conditions of approval.
Go ahead, please.
Lynn Tweet, Director of Development Services, there's actually kind of two issues with this that probably should be pointed out. One is the architecture, but we have since met with the applicant, sat down with them, explained what we want, and they said, yeah, no problem, we can do all those things. So it's just a matter of getting the drawings for that.
Okay.
Probably the bigger issue is the fact that where this development sits, um, there's a road, north-south road that we would call Southeast 25th that needs to connect to Veterans Parkway. It crosses the Great Western Trail. Um, there's some, still trying to work through all the agreements on how do we get that? Because it was a part of the Rails to Trails program, Warren County can't just deed it to the city as public street right away, so there has to be agreements that make that happen. They're still trying to work through that. That will provide them a primary secondary entrance exit to this, and that's where we want all the traffic to really funnel rather than going back to the east. So we have conditioned this townhome development as well as the Fox Ridge development that you're gonna see more for, for the plating here on that, that road connection to the north being figured out, or a alternate secondary exit entrance road being figured out for the development.
Have we participated in conversations with Warren County about getting permission to access that?
Um, that is my understanding.
Yes.
Wednesday, then Brian and I.
And we've already heard from the bikers on this. The biking community is all over it, not happy about the crossing on the, the Great Western Trail, but I think, I think as, as Brian pointed out, that, uh, I think we're gonna have one less crossing, uh, than we had before. And so they were understanding of that at least.
Well, and I think they understand that a couple million dollars we've done to improve the area down there around their trail is a part of a prior project as well. I just wouldn't want, you know, someone to use this to leverage these people unfairly to say, okay, now I know you can't do your development without it, so this is what I want. And so, I mean, hopefully people are all being reasonable and rational about it.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I have not been part of those conversations, but I don't.
Trying to get it in free title, but since it's the rails, the trails, they're talking about the easement, so we're just gonna meet Wednesday to talk what's gonna be in that easement.
Okay, all right. So hopefully the easement, that you can use it as a, you could a public street. I mean, that's all, that's what we need it for.
Right, right. It's more of a process than what they can, can't do legally.
But you, you haven't gotten any feelings, Dick, that people are being unreasonable about granite?
No, I don't think so. Brian's worked with them too, so I, I think it's just a matter of how we're gonna, what format we're gonna.
Good. All right, thank you.
I, I did hear one, uh, neighbor out there that I talked to was worried about, uh, the builder coming in, building these homes, but hopefully these architectural standards being upgraded will help a little bit. They really couldn't vocalize what their concerns were, but they were a little bit worried about it, so.
All right, someone want to make a motion? I see this came through development planning.
So move.
Second. Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote on seven D.
For yes.
Seven E, Oaks on Grand, 5745 Raccoon River Drive, approval of a full site plan to allow construction of an office building. JCG Equity LLC, it's a resolution to approve the site plan. There are no outstanding issues and there are two, uh, conditions of, uh, suggested approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
For yes.
Seven F, Microsoft DSM 12, 5855 Southwest Carey Street, approval of a major modification to allow construction of an approximately 250,000 square foot cold shell building for future data center, Microsoft Corporation. It's a resolution to approve, uh, the major modification. There are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
There are some questions or comments?
Yeah, just one quick question. I know this was in front of, uh, developing and planning. Uh, my thoughts go towards some of the Madison County residents who were here a few, a few weeks back talking about uh, just concern about how it looked. And my impression through reading through, um, this particular PDF was that, uh, the design standards, the look is going to be similar to what it is. And I also had a question, it appears that there might be one more. And I just wanted to just, uh, get some sort of assurance that, uh, there's not going to be any fundamental design changes so that the look of it will, they're already not pleased about it. I know they're not citizens of West Des Moines, residents of West Des Moines, but I just wanted to just, uh, get an assurance that there weren't going to be any fundamental drastically different design changes compared to the stuff that's already there for this one and what will be likely another one, because this is for number 12 and there's likely even number 13, is that correct? Okay, that was, that's what I wanted. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
Oh, I, well, oh, sorry. Thank you, Lynn, for what you're about to say, I assume. Sorry.
Lynn Tweet, Director of Development.
Sorry.
Yeah, the design is the same as the previous two buildings that we already have up. The intention is for it to carry through. Now, that's not to say that Microsoft does not change designs halfway through a project. They, they learn with everyone. Sometimes they make some tweaks. We can certainly make it known that we prefer that they continue with the same design theme and, and carry that through. There is a lot of buffering that goes around these properties in the long run. It takes time for it to grow. But in the long run, several years from now, you really won't be able to see a lot into the site and see a lot of this. So no, they're not the most attractive building. They're a functional building and that's, that's really what it amounts to. We do what we can to kind of minimize a lot of the negative elements, which are the generators and a lot of that mechanical equipment, but they're big buildings that there's not a lot you want can do with them other than make them spend a lot of extra money for not a strong reason.
Yeah, I assumed that was the case and it showed the picture from the freeway. And as there's more and more growth, you'll be able to see less and less. And my impression was that there weren't any drastic changes that were going to be like way taller or anything like that. And, and I assumed that was the case, so thank you for the confirmation. I appreciate it.
Okay, please vote on seven F.
For yes.
Seven G, Foss Plat of Survey, 5508 Ashworth Road, approval of a plat to survey to create two lots for transfer of ownership, Robert E. Foss and Lisa K. Foss. This is a resolution to approve and release the plat of survey and there are no outstanding issues.
Move for approval?
Second. Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
For yes.
Uh, seven H, Stonewood Plata Survey, parcel 2163, generally located at the southwest corner of Stagecoach Drive and future South Grand Prairie Parkway. Approval of a plat of survey to create one lot for transfer of ownership. Westwoods LLC, it's a resolution to approve and release the plat of survey. There are no, there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
For yes.
Seven I, Amendment to City Code Title V, Police Regulations, Chapter Three, Animal Control, Define Fence Height Regulations for Animal Shelter, City Initiated. This is an ordinance, as Renee mentioned, an ordinance for the first reading. Waive the second and third reading and final adoption, uh, due to the, um, public safety nature of this request.
I move to suspend rule 36.
Well, first we'll do the, the first reading.
First reading, okay.
And then.
Move, move, move consideration for first reading.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
For yes, nor in submitting the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by admitting Title V, Police Regulations, Chapter Three, Animal Control, Section 19, city may establish and maintain animal pound duties of pound supervisor to define fence height regulations for animal shelters.
Move approval first reading.
Second.
Who seconded it first time?
Second.
All right, please vote.
For yes.
Move suspending rule 36 and, uh, waive the second and third reading and adopt the final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
For yes.
All right, item eight, there are no items to receive, file and or refer. Item nine, other matters. Are there any other matters that any council member would like to raise tonight?
I've got one and Dick, you're gonna have to help me on this. Um, I would just, and, and maybe we can't do this now at this meeting, but I brought up the issue that I was gonna move and amend, uh, item 4G, except for it was on the consent agenda and I didn't pull it. Uh, so we passed 4G, which was the, um, CDBG funding for rental rehab. Um, I wanted to amend that, um, by changing the area median income down to 60% or less. And so I'm wondering if I can, uh, move to reconsider that vote tonight.
Yeah. Well, everybody passed, so you could make them.
Okay, so.
Second that.
So I move to reconsider.
Second.
Second.
All right. Please say aye.
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 Okay, and with that, I, I would move item 4G, uh, with the amendment that we lower that, uh, AMI down to 60% or less um, instead of 80% or less.
Second.
Questions or comments on that one?
Sorry about that, everybody.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for support, understanding, sorry.
Yeah, and I just want to make a comment too. You know, I, I, I've made lots of comments as we went through tons of the items on, uh, in section seven, because they are well vetted out in planning and development. I mean, hours and hours of reviewing this information, asking questions. And the kind of work that Lynn Tweet and her department, what they do and the enormous amount of push and pull and the demands of the developers and or the expectations of developers and all of that. Um, I am in awe with what they do, with the staff they have, how much they juggle and what goes on. And so, and there are other departments like Brian's and others that complement the work that they do who equally put in hours and times of sitting in these meetings and processing requests. So I, I just for tonight, it's on my heart to say, Lynn, I thank you for all of what you do here to get us to where we're at today, because it is no small feat whatsoever.
Yeah, I, I would add, you know, thank, thank you to Lynn, to Brian, all the staff for going through everything and getting us to the point that we're at. And thank you to the mayor for coming up with the subcommittee process that, uh, I think it was you that put that in place. That is a really worthwhile process that other cities don't have. And so I applaud you for coming up with this, that we can ferret out some of the issues and it lends itself to a better back and forth and, and, uh, conversation to kind of iron out some of those details. And yeah, staff goes above and beyond. I've, I've been in the field with Brian and the other engineers where, you know, we're working on, uh, you know, compromises and, and issues at people's lot lines and driveways and and these guys really go above and beyond all of our staff to make sure that we iron out these issues, so. Thank you, everybody. I agree.
Wonderful.
Good point, Renee.
All right. Thank you all. We are adjourned.